Hey everybody, this is Frankie Aberzino and I am here with Robert Wilson.
Bill Wilson.
Bill Wilson, I'm sorry. It's always good to get the person's name right. And he's a candidate for the City Council of Venice and we're going to talk today about his views on the various issues that are out there. He can't say this because it's bipartisan, but I can. He is a Republican. His opponent is handpicked by the mayor of Venice, which too is concerning to me and many others. I'd like to talk to him, but the invitation's open for Brian. If you ever want to sit down and address some questions with me, you can give me a call. So, let's go ahead and Bill, let's start with you just opening up and telling the people about yourself and your military experience and everything like that is just an opening. Let them know what you're all about.
Yep, I appreciate it. I get a kick out of my opponent when he talks about his lifetime of being here and I had been here about 30 years before he was born. So, I truly have a lifetime here. I'm as native as you can get. Moved to Sarasota County when I was six months old, product of Sarasota County Schools, graduate of Riverdale High School. Was actually one of the first to be able to graduate from the University of South Florida without ever leaving Sarasota. It's when they kind of combined up on that north campus years ago with New College and I was able to do that. I went in the military, high school, went in the Air Force. As anticipated, at the time I was in, I did get the opportunity to go to Da Nang, Vietnam. I was in an air rescue outfit called the Jolly Green Giants. So, when I got out, I came back and I went under the GI Bill, got my education. I was married and raising kids, but was able to go part-time for quite a while and was very proud to have gotten my degree. So, I am a local boy, but really what I'd like you to know about me is really when my team got together and said, "Why should people vote for Bill Wilson?" We narrowed it down to what we call the three E's and that's environment, economic vitality, and experience. So, environment, what has Bill Wilson done personally for the environment? Well, I'd like you to know, over 20 years ago, I founded the Sun Coast Reef Over Stive Club, Scuba Club. And always wanted to do things to give back to the community. I reached out to the city and said, "Hey, we'd like to do an underwater cleanup of the Venice pier." And they thought it was a good idea. We did it. It was a huge success and we've been doing it annually every year since. Well, that was so much of a winner that we said, "Well, how about the jetty? We could do the North Jetty and South Jetty." And they said, "Let's do it." Well, that was a bit more challenging, let me tell you, but we do that about three times a year. We're actually scheduled to do one tomorrow morning on the South Jetty.
I was gonna say that.
I'm not sure the weather is gonna allow us to do that or not. It has to be just the right conditions. So, it's been postponed once, may get postponed again, but we've been doing that about three times a year ever since. And now we've even added the mooring field over behind the yacht club. So, over the years, we have literally removed just tons. We have tons of debris from our local waters and we will be continuing to do that for many, many years. Then about 25 years ago, I actually joined a Chamber of Commerce Task Force, which we later spun off into its own separate 501(c)(3), a nonprofit that you know today as Venice Area Beautification Inc. or BABI. Today, you probably know it because of all those beautiful flower pots downtown and the hanging flower baskets. Those are courtesy of Bob Vetter and his Bloom Team and we thank them tremendously for that. You may also know him from all these volunteers that you see in their bright shirts with a big KVB on it. That stands for Keep Venice Beautiful. That's Corky Dalton and his group of Keep Venice Beautiful folks. They're out there all over the area. They're trimming, raking, pruning, spreading mulch, you name it, they're doing it. And they're the folks that have kept our brand-new landscape right down the middle of Venice Avenue looking as beautiful as it is and we thank them for that. But going back to where it really kind of started, BABI raised $5 million and we built 10 miles of trail, hiking biking trail, along both sides of the intercoastal waterway, which you know today as the Venetian Waterway Park. Very, very popular. We're very proud of that accomplishment. The one drawback was they would not allow us to plant a tree. That really bothered us for a lot of years. And finally, it was about five years ago, recall where the inspiration came from, but someone said, "You know there's that area that's the old abandoned railroad line runs from the historic train depot all the way down to Center Road in between the industrial area and the intercoastal waterway and just happens to run right parallel with the Venetian Waterway Park." Well, that seemed like a brilliant idea and it was an overnight success. After a mere three years of negotiation with Sarasota County, I had the honor as president of BABI to sign the agreement that led to the creation of the Venice Urban Forest. And in the two years since, we have literally planted hundreds of trees, many which are 20, 25 foot tall, thousands of understory plants, and as we speak, they're out there right now putting in another 100 large oak trees. And there's lots more yet to come.
I got a quick question for you and I don't want to lose my thought. I forgot my pen. One of my biggest concerns, and you can continue, is Sarasota County and working with them. We had a lot of issues previously and right now, I think, I don't think we're going in the direction we need to. So, it sounds like you've negotiated, you've worked with Sarasota County and that's something that you'll continue to do?
You really hit the nail right on the head there, Will. And that's one of the primary goals that I have. And I'm fortunate to, because I've been around a long time, I've known county commissioners for many, many years. I've known Nancy Dieter for probably 20 years and so, known Chaz Heinz for years and years and years. So, there's an advantage there. Al Mayo I've worked with. So, I know there has been some stepping on toes. Let me be nice and say there's been a little bit of stepping on toes. There is work that needs to be done to improve the relationship between the city and the county. I have spoken with them. I have let them know that I'm very aware of that and that's very much one of those things that I want to see improved on. And when elected, that is one of those things that I will be working on.
Yeah, and it may not seem like a huge issue, but it really is in the grand scheme of things. We need that relationship with the county and there's a lot of variables that go into it and I think it's hindered us somewhat in the past. So, that's why I wanted to interrupt him on that one. Go ahead with the, we were talking about BABI and the trees.
So, with the cooperation of those two organizations that I'm very proud to have had a hand in helping develop, I really think I've done a lot over the years personally when it comes towards both helping our environment and also making our city a much more beautiful place than it already is. So, I'm very proud of that. The next one of the three E's was economic vitality. And I feel it's critically important that we have city council people that understand and appreciate the need for a strong local economy and that also understand the part that our local business community plays in that. I'm a strong supporter of our local business community. In fact, I've served 12 years on the Chamber of Commerce Board and many, many other committees over the years. I'm proud to be a past president of Venice Main Street, still currently on the board. Another wonderful organization that does so much to try to support our downtown and its local merchants. So, I think that's very important with that economic piece. But really what it all boils down to in my mind and what really makes the biggest difference between myself and my opponent, and that's experience. I'm an experienced business leader. I've been president of Roberts Insurance Group for many, many years. I started with the agency when it was a husband and wife and a receptionist in a small office over behind the theater. You know, added on being personal lines manager and then I added on being the HR guy and then finally I became president. And I've been president for many, many years. I like to think I had a hand in turning that into a successful business that went from those three people up to a staff of typically 20 in our own 7,500 square foot building. Very proud of my time with that. Just by way though, let you know that when I'm elected on the 3rd, I'm going to be retiring fully on the 7th because I'm devoting my full time and energy to being a city councilman.
City councilman.
So, in addition to that, I've also been leader of nonprofits. In addition to the groups I've already mentioned, I was six years on the All-Fades Food Bank Board at a time of major expansion. During my tenure there, we hired the new executive director who's been there ever since and has done a marvelous job. She was equipped to take it to the next level that it needed. We were able to obtain a building that was coming available, that was a warehouse-type building immediately next door to our existing facility. We jumped on that opportunity and doing so, we doubled the capacity and capability of the food bank to serve the community. And how prophetic it was because look at the additional need that they're facing today because of the pandemic. Thanks to that strong leadership and vision, they were poised to be able to handle that extra. Very proud of my time with that organization. But probably the big one that's important to you is I'm also very experienced as a civic leader. I currently serve on the Venice Planning Commission at a time when we're rewriting the land development regulations. Previously, I have served on the Venice City Council. I was elected back in 2004 and served there. So, I really do think that I have the background, the experience. I can hit the door running from day one with a very small learning curve. And what I really want you to consider is that I already know what I can and should do as a responsible city councilperson. And more importantly, I already know what I can't and shouldn't do to protect the city from legal harm. I mean sadly, you only need to go back about a dozen years to see what happens when you elect inexperienced people that truly put their own wants ahead of what's really in the best interest of the city and its citizens. Costs you about $1.4 million. That's $1.4 million that could have been much more wisely spent. We can't make that mistake again. When you elect me, we won't be making that mistake.
Alright, so, let's get to, let's get to some meat and potatoes here. You mentioned the economy and I think going forward, it's going to be a critical issue. I'm seeing more and more businesses close down. Pine Brook, the GNC, I know that's national, but they just closed their doors or they're closing it in a week. What are some of your plans or what's the direction you plan on going on and to try to help some of these businesses out there that are hurting?
Well, one of the things that we, certainly when it gets to the point where we can start getting back to doing things somewhat as normal. This is a very difficult time right now. All the events that normally happen in Venice, and as I said, I was part of Venice Main Street. We had so many events that were constantly going on to try to bring people downtown, to get them to where they'd be down there. They'd be going to restaurants, going into the stores. All those things have been put on hold. That's extremely difficult. But certainly, when we're able to, we want to get back to doing those types again, those kind of events, the things that happen downtown, try to bring people back downtown. But the important thing is that the leadership has to have that understanding of how important those businesses are. I've seen times where there's people that really don't have an appreciation for that. They're critical and we need to be supporting our local businesses. And I know it's convenient to go online nowadays and buy things that way, but really, what do people fall in love with? They fall in love with downtown. I can't tell you how many times. I've been an insurance agent for years. People come in and I tell them they're in their homeowner's insurance. And I've heard them so many times. They say, "I turned in off of 41. I drove down through that quaint little downtown. I hit that beautiful canopied boulevard and I arrived at the beach and I was home. I just fell in love with Venice." I understand that and that's part of what we need to protect with the downtown. Now, people, when I ran once before, they tried to paint me as, "Oh, this is evil person that's just in the developer's pocket and just wants to destroy Venice." Well, anybody knows me, I've been working for 27 years as a community volunteer to make Venice better. But one of the things I also did is when I was on council, I championed the 35-foot-high height rule for downtown. You know, I said, "We need to keep that charm. That's what people fall in love with. It's the epitome of what people think Venice is. We leave a cotton picking hands off of that." Well, I'm on the planning commission now and just recently, you know, we're going over writing the land development regulations and the consultant was suggesting that we do four stories for downtown. I spoke up convincingly that we didn't want it back then. We don't want it now. And you know, the recommendation that's going to go as it stands right now is that, you know, we don't want four stories downtown and we know our recommendation is it's gonna be, you know, that that doesn't happen. So, that's another one of those things that I think supports exactly that. It supports our businesses downtown in that we keep that ambiance that people love and that people want to come and visit. And I'll be a strong, strong supporter of maintaining that downtown just the way we love it.
Yeah, and I've seen lately a lot, a couple of emails from Sandy and I think Janice, Janice's, I can't remember her name. Yeah, and they're pushing right now for, I believe it's an art festival in a couple of weeks. And they're saying how badly they're hurting. That's why it's an important question that. And I'm assuming since you're a past president of the chamber, I believe?
Not at the chamber, I was vice president.
Vice president, okay. So, you'll continue to have a relationship? Because I think that's kind of key, is that relationship with the chamber.
Absolutely. I've been, I've been non-stop with the, with the chamber since I got here. I started here on January 2nd of, you know, working in Venice. And lived in the Comas at the time, but I came down here to work in Venice, January of 93. And just before Christmas of, you know, 92, I went out to the chamber, which every year they would have a big monthly meeting at the YMCA, which was their Christmas special. And I saw a lady standing there and she had a red ribbon on, said membership. And I walked up to her and I said, "Hi, I'm Bill Wilson. I'm new in town and I'd like to get involved." Well, did I say it to the right person? Because that was Kathy Lainer. She was the membership chair at the time. Now she is the executive director over at the Venice Area Chamber of Commerce. And I was part of the committee that hired her. So, relationships are very important. And that's the nice thing with me is no matter what it is that's going on in town, the chances are, I know the people that are involved. I've got a relationship. They know me. They know they can trust me. They know that my heart comes from the right place because it's all comes out of my, from my love for this community. You don't run for city council for the money.
No, you don't.
You run for city council because you love your community and you really want to be able to continue that process of giving back. And with the relationships of having lived here and worked here for 27 years, that gives me a big head start over someone who's been here for a couple of years.
Alright, you brought up development. So, let's talk about concurrency, infrastructure, affordable housing. We're gonna hit on all three of those things. You're seeing a lot of development and I'm sure that's what's going to be painted of you. Where do you stand? One thing that I'm not a huge fan of and I don't know where you stand on it is, and I think we've actually might have discussed this. I'm gonna use the hospital, Venice Hospital, which I understand is county. You had three subdivisions around there. I think it's three. And their understanding was that that would be residential where the hospitals started doing their building and then they stopped. Well, the county came in and said, "No, we're gonna change the zoning." And that impacted a lot of pricing. So, in that stuff, when people are directly impacted, I have a concern about changing the zoning. If, if everybody agrees, like I think you had some zoning change near your house, but you guys were all impacted and you agreed and you said, "That's fine." Then I'm like, "Alright, people impacted are fine. We can move forward." What's your thoughts on that?
Well, what you're really talking about though is not, in the case of that, not impacting what's already there, but impacting what was intended to be there.
Exactly.
And because that has changed. I just, while we're, while we're talking though, really when you're talking about development, I think it's really the key thing that people really want to know the most about. I think it's important to understand the parameters that we work in. There's a misconception among, I think, a lot of citizens and I think there's a misconception among some people that actually run for office at times, that people on planning commission or people on city council, they can just do whatever they want to do. You know, however they feel about it, they get to vote yes or no based on what their personal feeling is. And nothing could be farther from the truth. Those are what we call quasi-judicial proceedings. And those things, you have to make your decisions based on evidence that was presented at that proceeding. And your personal feelings or opinions are totally irrelevant, have nothing to do with it. And it has to be that way. So, you know, how something impacts me personally isn't really the issue. The issue is what's gonna be the best thing for the community at large. Now, whether my opponent realizes it or not, and I'm not sure, maybe naive, maybe he does know or not, but the backers that he has, they're not new. It's the same backers that have been around for a long time. Their true agenda is, "Well, I'm here now. Don't let anyone else come." And that's just unrealistic. I don't consider myself pro-growth. I don't consider myself anti-growth. I consider myself a realist. I deal with what is. What's the reality of the situation that I have to work with? That's extremely important. If you don't understand that, you're doomed. And if you just stick your head in the sand and ignore it, then that doesn't help either. So, there are nine JPA areas. Those are joint planning agreement areas. Those are areas that both the city and the county jointly agreed. When, when growth occurs, that's the area. If there's gonna be development, that's the area it should be in. And furthermore, it should happen under the city. It makes more sense for it to work that way. That's what's been agreed to. The city cannot annex anything that's not in one of those JPA areas. And it's mostly, we know where it is. It's out in the Northeast. That's what was intended and that's what's been happening.
You're kind of binded by that agreement too, aren't you? And what's funny is, I'm gonna step in. What's funny is a lot of people that are fighting that agreement voted for it. And I'm not gonna name their names, but some previous council members voted for that.
Well, I like to put things into perspective because, you know, I was here when the first one happened, when I was out at Venetian Golf and River Club. You know, that was the first big one that was annexed in out there. I always found it interesting and I was, you know, just new, learning about things, you know, back at that time. But I found it interesting that the people that were against growth were against the annexation. And here's why. The county had that very land planned for 2,000 homes. When the city annexed that property, they reduced that down to 1,377. They also got 10 acres of land right along the river, which that's probably where those additional 600 homes would have ended up being built right up to the river. Instead, it's remained as just natural land. It is actually considered a park, but it's just remains as it is. There was property that came in to build a fire station right across the way. So, here's the thing is, if, if that hadn't happened, and I asked someone running for office last year, point blank in a forum, "Do you personally believe if that property had not been annexed into the city, that it would remain as vacant land today?" And the answer I got was, "Well, the county has shown no inclination to want to develop anything." To which I thought the county commissioner sitting next to me was gonna choke as they blurted out, "You've gotten to be kidding." How can you make responsible decisions when you don't even understand the reality of what something is? By annexing that property in, we got to say, "This is what we want the houses to look like. This is what we want the infrastructure to be. This is what we want the buffering around it to be." And most importantly, it's part of our tax base and those folks get to pay taxes to support the impacts that they're gonna have on us either way. Now, one of the things my opponent wants to do is to put these huge fees on. And what the intent is, the intent is to say, "Well, when we make it so costly, they just won't bother to develop it." You gotta go a step beyond and figure out, for every action, there's a reaction. What's the reaction gonna be? Well, those properties out there are in the county. They're in the county now. They have to come to the city and they have to request to be annexed and they have to jump through hoops to do it. If you make it so onerous and so costly that you're trying to get them not to develop at all, all you're gonna do is they're gonna say, "To heck with the city. I'm just going to the county." And trust me, the county is gonna be more than happy to let them go ahead and do it. We've lost that tax base. We've lost all input in what's happened. So, let's be real about how we look at those situations.
Well, and there's also, and I might get the name wrong. You can correct me, the Burt Harris Act, I believe? It's a statewide. And even though, you know, I mentioned to him, if I bought a property and I don't want it to change the zoning next to me, that may be excellent, but in a lot of cases, I believe that state act says, "Oh, no. They, they can change it if they want. You're out of luck basically. And you gotta adhere to that."
Yeah, I do believe, and I wonder at times if everyone running for office even knows what the Burt Harris Property Protection Act of 1995 is really what it is. What that is. And essentially, just to kind of summarize it is, if you, if you take away someone's opportunity to use their private property and you don't have a legal justification for doing it, you gotta pay them for it. So, let me just give you an example. You know, a lot of people are not happy that we have 10-story, you know, buildings that are right out on the water there on the beach. But if you were to put something in place that said, "No, you're not allowed to have anything there but five-story buildings." And a storm came through and destroyed those and they came back and said, "Oh, I'm sorry, but you don't get to build your condo back. You know, only the first five stories. The next five, you're out of luck." Guess who is gonna get sued and guess who is gonna pay for their loss of not being able to use what's rightfully theirs? So, you know, every decision we make when it comes to land use matters, Burt Harris Act comes into play. Because when we make a motion, whether it's on planning commission or whether it's on city council, and you say, "I move that we deny this petition," you have to add on to it "because." And you have to give the legal justification of what that is. And it's not that, "Well, they want to put in a whatever and I don't personally like those, so I'm voting against it." That doesn't fly. That's gonna get you sued.
And I think, didn't we, and I may be wrong again, my memories as I get older, I could have swung, we lost a million dollar suit last year, wasn't it, or something like that? Due to that? It fell under that or something like that?
There's been a number of things, right?
So, it does, it does impact you financially, my point being on it. How about the biggest thing a lot of people are wondering about is infrastructure. Now, we have Laurel Road and we're trying to work out a private-public partnership there with the county and the county's involved. Some people are looking at Pine Brook, which I know is county, but expand that to four lanes. So, what's your view on infrastructure and trying to plan that with all this development? A lot of people feel the development's coming, but no planning for infrastructure.
Well, one of the things that just came out last week was the MPO's 25-year plan for transportation needs. And that's one of the other things I tell the people. I think, well, stick our head in the sand. Folks, people are coming here whether we like it or not. You know, I've been here my entire life. Everything that has happened, I've seen happen. And I've known, I've seen it for years, whether we like it or not, especially under conditions of what people are having up north and everything now. They've worked all their life. They want to come down to Florida and fish and play golf. They're gonna come. I always said, you know, if you don't plan for growth, what's gonna, you're gonna end up with is unplanned growth. But you're getting it one way or the other. When it comes to those roads, it is a little more delicate situation in the sense that those are county roads. There really are three roads that, in my mind, will be built. They need to be built. They will be. It really is gonna come down to a matter of what priority and really what drives that, I think, more than anything is which pots of money that it comes from. And those are Laurel Road and all those folks that are out in that area. They need a way to come into town, a way to come in there, you know, roads to be able to come in and get to the beaches and shop downtown and so forth. Pine Brook is another one, very much that same type of situation. There's a third one. A lot of people don't know about yet, but that's, that's on the drawing board and I do believe that will be coming as well. And that's an extension of Lorain Road, which will actually connect into 681. So, it'll be a third area. But that's three significant roads. You can look up in Sarasota, if you can go from Bradenton all the way down to Sarasota and look at every one of those east-west roads. And you can see, every one of them over time has become a very busy connector. When you get between 41 or I-75 and 41, those become very, very busy roads. So, all three of those are gonna need to be done. What I have, what I am very careful about, I'm a fiscal conservative and I'm very cautious when I do things and I'm very careful about setting precedent with something. Being those are county roads, it's a very slippery slope for the city to suddenly step in and say, "Well, we'll do this or we'll do that or we'll pay for this." You gotta be very careful when you're doing things like that. Now, as I understand it, the city has agreed to, I believe it's $400,000. That's to help with planning and so forth for, for that situation. Yes, our folks use those roads. Yes, if there's something that's reasonable for us to help out in some way, like to help with a study for it, but that's a slippery slope that I say we have to be very, very careful. Those are county roads and the county needs to develop.
So, I take it with Pine Brook. I know there's no money budgeted towards it except for the intersection.
The intersection, right.
Is that something, you know, it's really strange. I live in Pine Brook and a lot of people don't, they want to keep it two roads and one person actually told me, "Be quiet, Frank. You don't want to draw attention to them expanding it." And I'm thinking, "Wait, you got Sarasota Memorial, the police annex, sheriff annex. All those neighbors over there are driving along Pine Brook. We got it basically expanded." So, and folks, that's why I asked them about the county. Relationships like that are gonna be key. Where you gotta work with the county on Laurel, Pine Brook. I'm not, Lorain I would assume too.
Sure.
And so, that goes along with the infrastructure. How about affordable housing? Now, we have this complex, what is it? Venetian, is it? Yeah. Now, we have that coming up. It's gonna help a lot of people. I'm sure it's already full probably.
Well, the thing, when you get into affordable housing, that's a difficult one. Because let's, let's be honest, there again, that's one of those issues that it's not just here. That's, that's an issue that's all over the country. That's a national issue. It does become a little more difficult when you're in an affluent area like we are. It makes it a little more difficult. But I really think it's one of those issues that the city of Venice of 23,000 people, we're far too small and really can't afford the degree of incentives that it would require. the degree of incentives that it would require to make it worthwhile for someone to develop for that market. Uh, you know, the limitations are here, it's eighteen units per acre, no matter where you are in the city, it's eighteen units per acre. Uh, eighteen units per acre is not going to, uh, really lend itself to what we would consider affordable.
Well, how about like in North Venice, I think it was a couple of years ago, there was a developer, and he wanted us to waive impact fees and he, but I don't think he would describe the monthly rate that he would rent, put out for the rent. I think that was one of the sticking points. Would you entertain something like that, or?
Now, I always think outside of the box, but I think what it really is gonna take, you keep talking about relationships, and this is another one of those. That's one of those issues that really is, takes a regional approach to, to handle it. And it's one of those things where I think that's where the, the city and the county needs to work mutually to try to, they have more people to divide it up over as far as, you know, uh, the cost, uh, working with us. And also, they have more land that's available to be able to, uh, you know, to do those types of things. Um, I just think it's one of those things that we're gonna have to, uh, get together with them. It needs to, it needs to happen, we have to have those discussions. That's gonna take a regional approach, it really is.
All right, and how about, and affordable is a huge issue, that's why I'm asking a few questions. I believe Sharky's, my good friend Justin out there, they, they understand the need of their employees, obviously, for that affordable housing, and they're doing some different things for them. Would you, as a council member, be interested in working with some public entities like Sharky, uh, Peer Group or other companies that bring in these employees and are trying to work out different incentives or try to help them? Cause I, I sincerely think affordable housing is gonna get, is gonna, the demand is gonna be even greater in a year, based upon what I'm seeing with the financial, and that's why.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's a number of things that both companies can become creative. I, I just recently went out and visited at, at PGT because it's one of our largest employers, so I wanted to, I wanted to find out what were their issues, and certainly, that's one of their issues. Uh, and some of the things that they had done, they had created their own daycare system, working in conjunction with the YMCA. Now, that's a wonderful type of outside-of-the-box thinking of, of two groups working together that, that makes something happen that, that really needs to happen. So I'm always for thinking outside of the box. I'm never one that says, no, we can't do it. It's like, let's look at it, maybe we can do it. But I think there are public-private partnerships that can be put together, uh, that can make some of those things happen, and I'm always open to that type of thinking.
Okay, uh, budgets. They just wrapped up basically the budget, and I had a huge concern with it. I was talking to a council member the other day. When I ran, I kept hitting on these huge salaries, and people may not know this, the assistant city manager and city manager combined make over three hundred thousand. Um, the Lynn Brembo, I believe, due to union, the way it works, he has to pretty much leave his position in a few years, and I believe a lot of people think city manager will be. And the question is, is do we wanna continue paying out these hefty salaries? Um, I believe somebody emailed me and I wrote an article about the events person paying over fifty thousand a year, I think it was, and them keeping them on, even though we can't get the events going right now, and who knows when they'll start back up. Um, we got a bicycle, part-time bicycle specialist being paid over twenty thousand. So I'm, I'm surprised that wasn't looked at harder in the budget, and I guess, so the question is, is what would you do to try, would you look, I know Linda controls a lot of that, and you guys listen in, you try to give some input to Linda. Linda's the finance director. What would you do about next year? Cause I, I wonder.
Well, one of the things was, uh, you know, we have to look at what's been happening in the recent years versus what's gonna happen probably in the coming years, and I, and I think it's very important to do that. I think it's, it's important to commend the folks that have been on council for the past number of years, when you look at the wonderful things that have been accomplished. The rebuilding of our infrastructure downtown with beautiful result. You look at seventy miles of road, city roads that are being resurfaced as we speak. You look at a, a new public safety building that just opened up, literally just recently. And now, the reconstruction of fire station number one and improvements to city hall. They did it, you know, through bond issues and so forth, they didn't break the bank, they've kept reserves and, and the, the reserve funds, which is important. They have shown what I consider to be, uh, uh, careful, proper management as far as, you know, looking for the future, preparing, keeping your infrastructure.
And she's won many awards, Linda, Linda has, she's been.
So I wanna, I wanna truly commend the people there, and, and that's one of the things that I wanna make sure we continue down that type of path of that proper type of good management. Uh, but I understand what you're saying, but sometimes things get forced on you. This year's budget basically got through relatively unscathed. I don't anticipate that's gonna be the case next year. A lot of times, things happen, but there's a lag before you really feel the effect of it. And businesses start going under and you start not getting as many tax dollars coming in and so forth, so there's a lag time. I truly think that's gonna be one of our biggest issues. Next year is going to be, how do we handle that budget? Um, I understand where you're coming from. In my mind, I've never seen any organization, and I said, I'm president of a company, I've been on boards of, of, you know, large-scale operations, um, I understand budgeting. Uh, it's one of those things, I have never, ever seen a budget that didn't have some fat somewhere that couldn't be cut. I mean, let's be honest, when things are good, uh, you know, you keep them going along and, and so forth, but if you really have to, there's things that can be done. I suspect we're gonna be having that exercise starting next year.
What are your thoughts along budget lines? Cause I, I wrote a few articles, I, I've been in medical billing for twenty years, so I was looking at the EMS merger. And I saw a lot of the information at the county, which had conflicting numbers with the city. We ended up going through it, starting, started, yes, I did it.
Yes, the first.
Yeah, so what are your thoughts on that? Hopefully, we all hope it's a success, we need it to be a success. Um, what are your thoughts about it since it's just starting out?
I'll be the, I'll be the first one to admit it. Um, I had, I had concerns, and I have a very good friend that, uh, is in that business up north, but I mean, he, he has a home down here, and, and, uh, and I talked to him about it, and, and I've had concerns, but I also try to make a point of, in, in preparation, when you run for city council, it should be all about preparation. So I have spoken with the, the chief of police. Uh, I have gone out and spoken with, uh, our fire chief and a couple of deputy chiefs. Um, and I got a, a very good tour and explanation of the new ambulances, so I went out there and said, I wanna know.
And the fine folks.
And then why are we, and why are we doing that, you know? Um, so I came away, I have to tell you, convinced. One of the things that's gonna happen, and, and I think a lot of people didn't realize it, and I'm not sure that I actually remembered myself, that uh, when you had county personnel that were doing those ambulances, there were times when they needed to go off on a call that wasn't in the city. They were gone, they were out of our area.
Yep.
And so, one of the, I think probably the most major thing is that we're gonna cut down response times, probably in the area of three to three, four, five minutes. That can be critical, that can be huge. So I mean, I think that, that in itself is a justification. Uh, but they also, uh, really believe, and, and I, and they convinced me, uh, that the numbers will work, that it makes more sense for us to be doing that. We are now gonna have medical personnel, not just on the ambulances, but on the fire trucks as well. We're gonna have double the number of EMTs that we had previously. So, uh, the, the response times are gonna be better, the number of people that are there, the equipment they have on these new ambulances, we're gonna be state-of-the-art in, in Florida, truly gonna be state-of-the-art. And they're gonna be able to be sending information right into the emergency rooms and so forth while they're on the way. And if they're gonna need a certain procedure that they know needs to be done, they can bypass the, going into the emergency room, and they'll be waiting for them when they get there, wherever they, whatever they need to go into the cath lab, whatever it happens to be, if it's a, you know, heart situation. But they're gonna be able to send that information as they're en route. So when I really looked at the whole process, I gotta tell you, I was convinced, uh, and I, I think they're gonna do, do a great job. Remains to be seen. I always, you know, I always wait to see, okay, show me the justification, but I feel good about it.
All right, good. Uh, one thing that's huge, you're working on the parks agreement now, and I was listening to him, I think, on their last meeting, and I don't think they paid attention to the whole Wellfield story, and one thing that sticks in my head is, uh, the former mayor, Holic, when he said that he talked to the county about Wellfield, and they said, we could care less, build condos on there if you want. And I know it was real controversial with, uh, Holic, with that whole situation there. And that's when the county basically, basically said, manage your own parks, and, and it hit us, I think, two million dollars. So where do you, they're all negotiating that now, and I think they said they wanna see if the county will take on Wellfield. Hit that and also hit our friends up in the northern part of Venice.
Sure.
I know they want something.
It is one of those things where, I mean, that is an agreement, uh, that's been in place for a long time and, and will expire. Now, it's not in the next ten minutes, but, but it's coming, so there will be, you know, the, the current one is going to expire. Um, the county has made it very clear that they're, uh, they're not there to take care of all of our parks. And we are blessed, folks. People don't realize that, I'm not sure what the, the current number is right now, but it's something like forty-three parks. I mean, I, I heard a, a gentleman come and speak one time, and he just, he told someone in the audience, he says, you don't realize how blessed you are. No one has a city the size of your city and has the number of parks that you have, so, you know, I appreciate that, but many, many of our parks are, uh, passive parks. Uh, they'll have playground equipment, I mean, they just put new equipment in, uh, over at the Venetia, one just got some new ones. There are other parks around that have those passive things. I truly anticipate when the new agreement comes, the city will be taking over those passive parks. But the truth of the matter is, when you talk about the sports complexes, when you're talking about Chuck Ryder Field, when you're talking about the Wellfield Complex, those are parks that, quite honestly, the, the number of kids that we have in a, in a city of twenty-three thousand, that has an age that's pushing very close to average seventy, I think it's sixty-eight point seven or so. Um, the number that we have for, for, for supporting those facilities alone here is really not enough. To make those types of parks work, you have to make those to where you're drawing from, folks from out of the county, or in surrounding areas in the county as well. And it just makes more sense for the county to maintain, uh, operation and control of those sports complexes, and that would be Wellfield and Chuck Ryder. Uh, whereas the city will, no doubt, I think, be taking back over the, the passive-type parks. And that, to me, makes sense, that's the way to do it. I do know our folks out in, in the northeast, uh, really do, uh, wanna park out there, I know that's something very important to them. As I said, there is a ten-acre park out there, but that's gonna remain natural, and we want that to remain natural, that really was, was the intent of that. Uh, but, um, I know pickleball has become a very big thing these days, I think that's one of the things that they would like to have. There is a, something that happened, you know, fairly recently now, where, uh, the city did buy land out in that area to be used for a lift station. Um, you know, I don't know, but it's one of those things.
Think that they, it was supposed to be a park or something?
Well, that's, that's, it's one of those things, I don't know the inside scoop on that, but that's certainly one of the things that I would be looking for and interested in to see. Is there a way that you can take that land and have that over there, it's for a lift station, but then could you also put in something like pickleball courts? And if you're playing pickleball, what do you care if it's next to a lift station? It doesn't really matter, so. I don't know the inside scoop on that, but I can tell you that's one of the things, and one of the ways I would think outside of the box, they need a park out there and, and they should have one, and those folks there need to know that they are every bit as much of part of Venice as anybody right here on the island. They're just as important and their needs are just as important. And, uh, and people that are serving on council need to know that, and, and I've been out there. One of the things, I talked about preparation before of, of running for city council. Um, that's what I've done. Uh, I mentioned, I, I, I meant to met with the chief of police, I met with the fire chief, I've met with the city attorney, I've met with, you know, James Lynch at, at Public Works, I've met with Kathleen Whedon, uh, I've met with Linda in finance, um, I've known Alan Bullock for years, back when he was there, when I was there before. Um, so the point is, I've reached out to all those people so that they would know who I am, so that I could, you know, find out what, what their concerns were, what they saw coming down the pipe. But I also went out and, and, and reached out to the leadership at places like Venetian Golf and River Club. Their president and past president and so forth, uh, the folks at Waterford. I went out and I spoke with them, cause I know, you know, a lot of times I wasn't sure if they were gonna be having forums or whatever is in the past, but I wanted them to know, I shared their concerns, and I wanted to hear their concerns. So I've reached out to those people. Same with Bay Indies, I went out and met with the, the current president and the past president. And, you know, what are your issues, and, and what, what could I try to help you with and so forth? Those are the things that you do to prepare. City council is not a place where you do on-the-job training. I mean, it just isn't. You know, I, I've told people before, but when I ran the first time, uh, and, and I'm, I'm proud of the story, but I think it, it says who I am. When I first came here, uh, I've always been interested and always followed politics. And, uh, I was having some legal work done, and it was, uh, the city attorney was the time, was at, at city attorney for the city, uh, back then, and I told him, I said, I'm gonna run for city council. And he just looked at me, it's kinda like he said, well, you're not prepared for that, you know? I mean, I was new with the business and so, and I said, oh, I know I'm not. But I put myself on notice by telling you, I'm gonna live up to that. Well, folks, it was ten years later when I ran for office successfully. But during that ten years, I got my business established. I got it to where I could afford to do it, cause like I said, you don't do city council for the money. I could, and I was self-employed so that I could work my schedule around to make it work. And I prepared myself, and I also went to every single council meeting for a solid year, and back then they were in person. And, uh, I also served, uh, for a long time on the Citizens Advisory Council to the MPO, representing Venice on transportation issues. That's why, you know, I've actually, you got notification of that report when it came out. All these years later, they still sent me things. Um, and also, while I was on council, I was liaison to things like the Architectural Review Board. But I prepared and went to all these different things and got myself ready so that I could hit the door right off the bat, knowing what I was doing, not saying, I'm gonna take on this job and I'll, I'll learn how to do it when I get there. I just don't believe that's the way it should be done.
Yeah, and I, me personally, we all know, so I know someone that was, uh, went, got elected last year and knew nothing, and, and he's proven your point. But you don't have to comment on that.
I won't.
Um, the, one of the last things I wanna talk about is something that's one of the biggest revenue generators that's directly within the city, and that's our lovely airport. And we have the hotel that's gonna be built next to it, and there's, there was a great deal of concern about occupancy because I think we're at ninety-seven percent in the county during normal times, not pandemic times. Um, so what are your thoughts on the airport and the hotel and and I guess, where do you stand on any future hotels? Cause I know that's a concern, I think over by Richards? They were trying to get one there, and I know you're, I don't believe you're on the planning committee for that, so you may not be able to talk about certain aspects.
Yeah, I, uh, there are certain things I can, I can discuss, other things that are similar, but when it's actually some, some situation that actually came before us, I, I prefer, that's one of the things I knew would be difficult. But, uh, but I'm gonna stay involved one way or the other, folks, uh, I'm, I'm always gonna be involved in, in the city. But, but I understand your point. One of the things I found interesting, uh, years back, uh, I had a friend that had, had moved here because of the airport. He was, he was did aerial photography, and that's the reason he, and he bought a house over near the airport. And he got invited to, uh, someone's house, and, uh, the invitation was, well, we need to get rid of that airport. Well, the person that invited him over didn't even have any furniture. They had just moved in, I think they'd been there about ten days, and they were already, well, we need to get rid of the airport. Uh, folks, that airport had been there for sixty years, it's part of our history. Um, it's, it's, it's defines who we are, I mean, it, it's, you, you don't move into a town and then just say, because I'm here now, you change everything for me. Um, that airport's an important part of our community, I support that. Um, I, I'll be the first to admit to you, I'm, I'm an aviation lover, I can't hear an airplane fly over that I don't stop and look up and see what it is. Uh, I have flown in and out of our airport many, many times, I have friends that have airplanes over there. So there again, I get to see things from both sides. Every issue, I'd like to see what's it look like from your point of view and what's it look like from your point of view, so I'm giving it a real, honest look. Uh, but I've told the people at DASI that, um, they have a supporter with Bill Wilson, you're not gonna hear me saying, let's get rid of that airport. Uh, as far as, uh, uh, having a hotel down there, there were some places, if, if you bring a hotel in and try to put ten pounds of stuff into something this big, and there's just no way, if you have to ask for nine different variations of, you know, the variances that you need.
You guys made that.
Chances are, chances are, uh, it's not gonna happen. We, we take our responsibilities very seriously. Is a hotel, you know, probably gonna come somewhere else, or would it, would it might work somewhere else? Quite possibly. Um, if one comes, I'm gonna look at it very seriously, uh, from the right perspective, from both points of view. If it fits and it's the right place, I'll be all for it. If they try to do something that doesn't fit, uh, then I won't be.
Yeah, and I could tell you, the, um, the hotel they were trying to build out at the, uh, next to Richards, the planning committee basically sent them away and spanked them because they were ill-prepared and it just didn't mash up and everything, I know you can't say too much about it.
Yeah.
Um, so why don't we go, I think I covered every, you know, I am covering one thing, you can comment or not comment on it. I'm writing a story later today, I think, and I did an interview the other day about some of the racism concerns with a couple of suits that are out there, one that we just, DOJ came in. What, I, I, I'm assuming you're somebody that wants, um, equal opportunity for everybody, and you wanna make sure that our shop, our house is cleaned up, and, uh, today's story is gonna basically, what the DOJ said, we gotta improve on pine, and I'm gonna put it out there and say. What's your thoughts?
Yeah, um, that's always, it's one of those difficult ones, it's something that, you know, apparently happened sometime in the past, but it's one of those things I only know about it as much as anybody else, what I read in the newspaper. And one of the things I learned when I went on council the last time is, a lot of times you think you've prepared, and you think you know everything, and then you get on there and you find out you didn't really know everything. That's the truth of the matter, and, you know, so I mean, there's things that, uh, I'm sure there's much more to the story that I, I didn't get just because I read a news. And, you know, so I mean, there's things that, I'm sure there's much more to the story that I, I didn't get just because I read a newspaper. Clearly, um, you know, if those things happened, those things should not have happened. How it's been dealt with, um, that's one of those things you can be assured, if I get on council, I will be looking into that. I'm gonna wanna have answers to that, I don't wanna see anything of that nature ever happen again. And we'll do everything possible to, to see that it doesn't happen again. But to actually to, for me to declare one way or the other, they did or they didn't, I don't know any more than you do, other than what I read in the newspaper story, so.
Solid position.
That'll, that'll have to do later when I get there.
Now, what we're gonna do is, I'm gonna leave the camera, leave it all to you, you can give your closing line, you can take five minutes, you can take twenty. Make sure you tell about your website, if people can volunteer, donate, uh, right now, mail-in ballots, you guys should have gotten them last weekend, I think weekend. And, uh, so whatever you want, this is your time and I'm gonna go on the other side of the camera.
Sure, well, thankfully, uh, it, it, this was a pretty open type forum, which I really appreciate and really gave me an opportunity to try to talk about things that, that mattered to me. And I think I really did get most of my, my points in. Uh, I wanna remember again, you know, I'm, I am about the environment as well and I've actually done something. I mean, you can go out there, you go out right now and you can put your hand on those hundred oak trees that are going in. It's not talk, it's action, we're, we're making it happen. The die club has been doing those cleanups, literally have a conservation, uh, group that comes out, they, they weigh it, they measure it before it's properly, properly disposed of. So, you know, I think that environmental piece, uh, there's, there's, that's important. And the city needs to be doing the things that it needs to do. And, and I just want you to know, there's, let me just go over a few things that the city has done and you can go on, this is information that's on their website. The coun- council insisted that this information be posted so people could see it and that it stayed on there. But let me just tell you some things, they passed a resolution encouraging no more lawn fertilization. They increased education via the newsletter and websites and social media. They formed a stormwater stakeholders group, which just about two weeks ago, they extended for another year to examine the rate structure. And what they were seeking to do is to set aside money every year for those long-term type projects. Because no matter how dedicated you are and how much, what a good citizen you are, everyone has a certain limit that they can tolerate of how they're gonna be taxed. And that's not something you can take money out of the general fund for, that's something that, that collects its money through its rate structure and if possible, through, uh, getting grants. So, uh, they're looking to try to set that money aside each year so that they can do future projects. They've arranged monitoring of primary outfalls to evaluate the water quality prior to its, its discharge. They've placed Florida yard requirements into the land development regulations. And they also created a voluntary free septic tank inspection, which is really something, when you consider, we have forty-five remaining septic tanks in the city and ten of those are on the island, uh, but there's forty-five altogether. But that's a five hundred dollar value that they can just come in and we'll inspect those tanks for them to make sure that they're operating properly. The other thing they did is they, uh, you know, it was a reaction, but Governor Scott had abandoned the twenty-ten state stormwater treatment rule. And the city passed a resolution to support reinstating that rule. So, you know, I fully understand where my opponent comes from, he moved here a couple of years ago and we had real bad red tide. I've lived here my entire life, I can tell you, there were times when I lived in what's now the Gulf Gate area and there wasn't another house around us for three miles and we had red tide outbreaks that lasted all summer long. So do we need to, to take steps to mitigate the nutrients and so forth? Absolutely, and I think the city has reached out and done what it can do. But realistically, can we as a city by ourselves solve the red tide problem? Of course we can. That's one of those, another one of those things when we talk about cooperation with the county. That's one of those things, probably the most important thing we can do is to improve our relationship with the county so that we can amplify our voices in that regard through the county, up to the state and the state up, you know, really to the federal level. Because when it comes to the waters and our Gulf especially, uh, that's gonna, that's gonna take our help, every one of the Gulf Coast states, every one of the states along the Mississippi River. And if you convince Mexico of what they do as well. So I mean, I'm a realist, I, I, like I say, I deal with what is. So yes, there's things we need to do, yes, there are things we have done, so, you know, I appreciate that. But being on city council, the last thing I really wanna leave you with is, when it comes to this council race, Bill Wilson is not the one-issue candidate. There are a hundred other issues that somebody of our constituents is just as passionate about and it's just as important to them. And every one of those issues needs to be important to us, the city council people, whether it's on the island, whether it's at the northeast. Everyone is important and every one of their, their things, you know, their, their issues are important. Being a one-issue candidate, in my mind, there's nothing worse. So I, I just wanna leave you with that. I'm looking forward to it, I want you to know I've planned for it, I've been working towards it. And come November third, I'm gonna be, like I say, retiring and that's gonna be my full-time commitment. It's important to be able to, it's one of the other things, people have misconceptions about what it takes to be on city council. And I've heard people say, oh, it's just a couple of meetings a month. Well, there's people that run that think it's just a couple of meetings a month. Let me assure you, it's not, because, you know, when you get to the dais, what you're there for is to make that final decision. But you've had to do all the homework in the background before you get there. There are numerous workshops that you have to attend, those are very important, there are special meetings that you have to attend. You have to be liaison to several of the other, you know, boards and committees that are out there that need to have someone there. It is a big, big commitment and you need to realize that, you need to go it in, understand it going in so that you can do the job right. I've been there, I've done it, I'm ready, you vote for me on November third and I'm gonna be working for you the following day. And I appreciate your time.